I'll let the committee and the public know that this meeting is being recorded. We'll do the roll call, so I don't think Dave is here. Jess?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
I don't see Mike. Randy?
Here.
And I also don't see Susan.
She was here. She must have dropped off.
Okay. And then I thought I saw Tom. Is Tom here?
I don't see.
Tom's in the waiting room.
Oh, yes, here. There we go. Thank you. All right, Tom, you're here? Doesn't look like it's letting them in.
Sometimes they have to accept on their end. There you go.
All right, we got you now, Tom.
I'm here.
Awesome, thank you. And I am here as well, so. We're good. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, September 12th at 7:00 PM. First up, we have our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, accounts payable warrants. And that's it. So I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
June, Jess steals in and steals the second. All right. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have Public Communications. I believe. Keep me honest, Robin, did we have?
Yes.
There was one, right, Mr. McPhee?
Yeah, I believe it's Pat over here.
Okay.
How long?
Thank you. All right, Mr. McPhee, you're up. You've got three minutes.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, very much. What I'm curious about is I'm looking for when the vote for Ashby Elementary School is going to be happening. Along with that note, I'm curious to find out the input of the board as to whether it's renovations or whether it's a complete new school. You know, my concern is getting, you recently heard, Ashby was cutting budgets so much, they were not giving enough to police officers to retain them, that they've moved on. And now we have state police running the police station at night. So I'm getting a little concerned about budgetary management.
All right.
My question is, okay.
Yep, no, so I appreciate that. We're going to talk more about the next steps with Ashby Elementary later in this meeting. So I think your questions there may not have definitive answers, but at least a plan to get answers for those questions as this meeting progresses.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. All right. Next up, we've got the Chairperson's report, which I don't really have much to update. I'll save my comments for later. And then Superintendent's report, Superintendent Morgan.
Sure, thank you. So just a couple of updates. And I believe Catherine Hampson is on the call. If she's not, I should be able to answer most of this, but just wanted to let the committee know that we have, we're in the process of getting new crisis flip charts for each of our classrooms district-wide. We've been working with the police departments and the fire departments to make sure that everything is following the protocols and to make sure that it's in line with what our first responders are able to do in the three towns. And the goal is to have those new flip charts in place at some point in September or very early in October. Another thing that we have or will be putting into place this coming school year are regular building checks. So essentially, we're going to be asking the administrative teams from each of our schools just to make sure that the building is secure after student arrival, before and after lunch, and after students depart for the day, making sure that all the doors that are supposed to be secured and locked are secured and locked. So just a couple of things that we're doing just to increase our awareness of what's going on and to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to keep the students in the district and staff, for that matter, safe. And another piece is that the Department of Ed did have a phone call last week with the Commissioner. And DPH and DES, he did release new guidance related to COVID-19 this afternoon at 11 o'clock. That information came out. At least from the Department of Ed's standpoint, they are referring to COVID-19 as an endemic at this point. Something I am recommending, I don't necessarily think this is something that needs to go to vote. I'm not sure we actually voted on it in the first place, was it's our intent at this point in time, unless the board sees, feels otherwise, that we're not going to be utilizing the COVID-19 dashboard any longer. That's in part because the state is no longer going to be collecting data. They're not going to be asking us to report our positive cases. And the fact of the matter is, is that we've really reached a point where most of the testing is being done at home right now. The reliability of accurate numbers has dropped significantly. So it is, it's my intent, again, if the committee wants to discuss it, not to run the dashboard. It takes a tremendous amount of time away from our nursing staff. And again, where most of the tests are being done at home, we have just under 200 tests, I believe, left district-wide. And our intent is to use those, if families want us to use them. So if a student comes to the office, isn't feeling well, and the parents want us to test them in school, we will certainly do that. But once that supply runs out, we will not be getting any more free tests from the state. So any tests that we get will have to be budgeted for. At this point, there's no statewide masking planned. It is up again to families to determine whether or not they want to wear masks. The state is asking districts that we should have testing kits and masks on hand, just in case there is a surge at some point in time. And did want to check in, I don't have my screen up right now. I'm not sure if Catherine is on the call, but she may be able to update you on any new information. Is she on the call, Robin? She was planning on coming today when I saw her.
I don't see her, but I'll text her.
Okay. And again, at this point in time, you know, that they are expecting the potential for a spike, but would certainly be interested in hearing what the committee's thoughts are on this. I will say the reliability of the dashboard declined significantly in the spring as well, where, again, the symptoms seem to drop off and be more flu-like than anything. And just the fact of the matter where is returning to home at this point, the testing that is, that we're really not going to get accurate numbers. So certainly welcome thoughts on that. Again, not sure if the committee wants to vote on it, but that's, that's my thought. That's also Catherine's thought as well. And it is aligned with what Dusty's doing.
She's joining now. Brad?
Okay, then I'll let her give, give the update if she's here. And that way, again, I apologize to be sharing this now, but it was not released until 11 o'clock today. So Catherine, thanks for joining us. I just wanted to know if you could give just a brief overview of the new guidance that that came out today in a joint statement from DPH and DES.
So the guidance eliminates the separation between students and staff. I don't know if you remember or not, but the end of the last school year, they had eliminated quarantine for students, but not for staff. It was still in place for staff members who were not vaccinated. That's been completely eliminated now. Anyone who we used to call kind of as a close contact is now simply considered an exposure. And they're asked to mask for 10 days after the exposure and to test on day six for as long as they remain asymptomatic. If they develop symptoms, then obviously they need to test sooner and they need to stay home. As far as the isolation goes, they isolate through day five at home. And then as long as they're negative on day six in the morning, they can return to school on day six and mask through day 10. So there's not a huge difference there. They're not recommending any surveillance testing or tests to stay or anything like that. The only thing they are saying, if you want to do it, you could continue doing symptomatic testing. We still have about 1,000 tests left of the Abbott binex. So my recommendation would be that we make it available to those who would like to, you know, so if a student develops symptoms in school, we can test them in school. And they can stay as long as they're negative. Once those tests are gone, you know, I don't know that we won't necessarily need to get anymore. We certainly also have a significant supply of at-home antigen tests that we can send home with kids so that they can test at home as well. Everything else is pretty much the same as it was kind of the end of the year. That was probably the biggest change they made. They really eliminated the whole quarantine completely.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hampson. Randy, do you have a question?
No, just a comment. Brad was asking what the school committee felt about the new guidance. And all along, we've been kind of sticking to what, you know, adhering to the guidance that the DPH and the DE SE has been putting out. So I don't see any reason why we won't go along with this guidance at this point in time. I would like to see us retain the ability to continue to follow any changes that happen, even if they, you know, we have a huge surge and they decide to put masks back in place. I want to make sure that the district has that flexibility to go along with that advice as well, that we're not just going to say, okay, no more masks, because there's no masks right now. I want to continue to follow the advice and the guidance that's being put out.
And I was slightly off. I apologize. I thought we had about 125 per building between the seven. It looks like we have about 1,000. So I was off by about 150 tests or so. So apologize for that. But I would agree with Randy. I do think that we should be able to retain the ability to be flexible should the need arise.
And you do need to be aware that masking in the health office is an ongoing thing. That has not been changed, the same as it hasn't at your doctor's office or hospital. If you go into anything, any place that's classified as a healthcare setting, you will be expected to mask.
All right, anything else on this topic?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to old business, Ashby Elementary School. There's two things that, that I would like to do. One is to appoint a school building committee to go off and do the work that needs to be done regarding the decision. So we can talk about that. And then also see if committee members had any questions on the Collins Center report that was sent out. And if there's high-level questions, then I think we can talk through those. Any details around like next steps? If we are successful in appointing a school building committee, I'd expect that that would be handled through through that avenue. So I guess the first with the school building committee, what I'd like to just open some discussion on before we, before we make a motion is to appoint a school building committee similar to the to the structure or in line with the structure that MSBA requires in the event that this ends up becoming an MSBA project, just to, just so we're all set, but also because I think it provides good representation. So it would include, again, similar superintendent. I'd like the business manager there, Director of Technology, representative from facilities, the school principal, teacher or staff member from Ashby, as well as Ashby town reps, like the town administrator, select board rep, FinCom rep, and then a couple of citizen representatives plus an alternate. And that would and then, and then charge that group with going off and, and getting more information on the path forward, making a recommendation back to the committee and, and getting the town to support whatever, whatever option is deemed the best one to move forward with. So I'll pause there. Randy, I see your hands already up.
Sorry. Being that we have not advertised this, it's kind of difficult to get community members and appoint community members at this time. So whereas we can certainly ask for volunteers from the group that's in front of us as far as the school committee, because we basically have everybody here. I think there needs to be some advertising to the public before we have an official building committee with all of those members on it.
Yep, no, and I, and we have a list of interested people already. But what, what I would recommend is that, well, one of two options, whatever the committee's comfortable with, one is to allow the chair of the building committee to to appoint, again, whatever we decide to, citizen reps and an alternate, or have that person make a recommendation back to this group, and then we can officially appoint at the next meeting. But I agree that we just need to put it out there despite a growing list of people interested. So June, I'm sorry, Randy, do you have anything else before I go to June? All right, thank you, June.
Yes, I was just going to reiterate that we've had several people reach out from the community already. We actually have a list of about 11 people that are interested. One is a FinCom member, so some may have, you know, other, other roles as well. But, um, but we do have a lot of people already that would like to be involved. So we will probably have to limit that a bit. And I, as the only Ashby representative on the school committee, I would be willing to chair the Ashby Elementary Building Committee. Should we decide to form it? So I just wanted to put that out there.
Awesome. Thank you, June. Any other questions or comments from folks? So just to, I guess, just go down the list again, and I'll word this in a way so someone can make it so moved. But to appoint a, I guess we'd call it an Ashby Elementary School Building Committee. And I'll say with June as the chair, we would need an alternate member. And I don't know if anyone is interested in being the alternate on the committee. I'm happy to do so. Having served on the high school building committee, but if anyone's interested in the alternate.
This is Lisa. I can, I can be the alternate.
Perfect.
Since I have some time.
I appreciate that. All right, so appoint an Ashby School Building Committee, Ashby Elementary School Building Committee with June as chair, at least as the alternate school committee rep. The superintendent, the district business manager, which would be Nancy, the director of technology. I don't know, Brad, rattling these names off, I want to make sure you're okay with them. So if you have any concerns, let me know, because I don't think I've cleared all this with you necessarily.
I, I think everyone you said is, has made sense as far as central office staff.
Facilities representative, would we want Oscar, Dave, somebody who's very close to the building? I don't know who's the appropriate person there.
I can talk to Oscar or Dave and see which one of them is available. They're both pretty knowledgeable about the facility. So yes, I can certainly have a conversation with both of them.
Okay. And then the Ashby principal. I would, I would like to see an Ashby teacher or staff member, someone who's in the building day to day. And then the Ashby Town Administrator, a select board representative from Ashby, a FinCom representative from Ashby. And then two citizens, two citizen representatives and one alternate citizen representative. And I would, I would add that they, it would be nice, at least if one of them had some form of, of building experience if possible. Or experience with a project of that, of that type would be, would be helpful. I think that's it. Questions on that, or I'll take a so moved unless anybody wants to change anything?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Who was that? Sorry. Thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion on this? And just for clarity, there's a facilities position would be we'll, we'll look to Brad to provide a recommendation back from Oscar or Dave on that. And then we'll need a teacher or staff member from Ashby, which would be TBD, as well as select board and FinCom representatives would be TBD and citizen representatives would be TBD. Everybody else is kind of per their position. And then I, maybe just to make it easier for all those open positions. If this passes, I'll, I'll look to June to maybe coordinate the responses on those open positions and come back to the next school committee meeting. I will formally appoint. It doesn't mean you can't get started with conversations, but we'll just make it formal the next meeting with those open positions.
Yep, that works for me. And we do, Dan Johnson is a custodian at Ashby Elementary. He was one of, one of the volunteers that we have that was interested. So that may fill that up.
Cool. Thank you. All right, no other questions. We will vote to appoint or create a Ashby School Building Committee and appoint the members that we mentioned, minus the ones that are, that are vacant. So Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy? Is Randy still on? Let's see, Randy. Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I'm going to assume Randy got disconnected at some point. So I don't see her. All right. So thank you for that. And then for the Collins Center report, did anybody have any questions for the folk committee? That they wanted to bring up or I don't know, superintendent, if you had any background you wanted to provide on that report?
No, I mean, it's obviously a very lengthy report. It's, it's well over 200 pages. It does give us the four options that the Collins Center has outlined as being potential options. It certainly gives the background is, is how we arrived where we're at right now. But to me, you know, the report overall is, is really just an extension of the PowerPoint that they've already shared with the committee. It's just, there are parts that have more detail to it, but it does, again, outline the four options that the Collins Center has come up with.
Thank you, Brad. All right, now, and just to reiterate for the public, I know we continue to get, continue to get emails and input from community members on most of them not wanting to close Ashby. But just to reiterate that the Collins Center report is superintendent just reiterated, plus some of the other reports that we've seen are just really information gathering, presenting what a wide array of options are. So we've, we've not made any decisions. And again, we'll look to the the newly formed building committee to come back with recommendations to answer Mr. McPhee's question from the public comment period. It, it will likely be a bit of time, and I can't put an exact number, but I would probably say in the magnitude of months before before there's a recommendation or even an initial direction towards a recommendation from the building committee regarding the building. And I would anticipate that there's, there's other votes, whether it be from the town or otherwise, that would need to happen before a final, final decision is made in terms of what we're going to do with the building or with the students in the building or both. So appreciate everybody's patience during the process. It's, as we've seen with the high school project, which is still open, that, that things, things can take a lot longer. But if we're going to do it right, make sure that we've got all the options being considered and the input from as many folks as possible. Again, I expect it to take, take a bit of time to make sure we get it right. Anything else from folks on Ashby Elementary that they'd like to discuss? All right. Moving on, Superintendent Morgan, the School Resource Officer, MOU.
Sure, thank you. So again, I'm not sure if, if school committee needs to approve this or not. It does have my signature. It has a spot from the superintendent's signature at the bottom. I do not recall what happened the last time that we did this. But Chief Sartell did send me the, the MOU back in July. I did send it off to the school committee, just asking if this is something that, that I should be signing, signing off on, or if the committee wanted to entertain it. Which is why it's here tonight. In essence, the only thing that has been changed with regard to the MOU itself are items that were mandated by the law and the Department of Education. Chief Sartell was not given, nor were the other police chiefs across the state, given a red line version of what was changed, but I can outline for you some of the key things, just based off of my conversation with him. And things that have changed from the previous MOU is that it restricts the release of certain student information to the police. So schools cannot just give information to the School Resource Officer unless student safety is at risk or there's a court order. So again, if there's, if there's a minor discipline issue or even something that's significant, where student safety is not at risk, the student information cannot just be given to the SRO. And for all intents and purposes, when an SRO is involved, parents are involved as well. Just to put that out there, that's the case most of the time, unless it's something that's extremely urgent. They have put in place new testing and certification requirements in order to come in SRO. Previously, testing and certification were not required. All you had to be was a police officer. Now they have training set up. And if our SRO were to leave and go back, you know, just to, to be, you know, a Townsend Police Officer, it would be a difficult and time-consuming commitment to find someone to replace Officer Francis, just because of the certification in testing that's in place now. Also, moving forward, the SRO, again, if our SRO were to change, the SRO must be selected via a search committee made up of school, community and police personnel. And they also lifted the mandate. Previously, any schools that had an SRO had to have a minimum of one full-time SRO per district. They have eliminated that. So it can be less now. So that's certainly not a major change. Outside of that, everything else is the same. The SRO will continue to be Officer Francis. The school district will continue to pay $80,000 for the SRO at the high school for, for the school days that he is at the high school. And the SRO's office will be at the high school. But much like everything else, if there is an issue, regardless of what town or what school it's in, the SRO is oftentimes involved. The SRO can frequently be seen in any of the three towns, at any of, at any of, in any of our seven schools, depending upon what's happening. So just wanted to put that out there. It is something, again, the MOU changes were all state mandates in order to continue on with the SRO program in the Commonwealth. There was nothing else changed.
I'll ask I think Randy's back. I'll ask her a question about, she remembers how we did this in the past, if the school committee approved these, the MOUs for the School Resource Officer in the past. Do you know?
I believe we did because it has a financial impact on our budget. Maybe needs to vote on anything financial.
Perfect, that makes sense.
And any contracts that we, we enter into this, even if superintendent is signing them, we're still responsible for all contracts.
So I would just need permission from the committee to sign.
Yep.
And I will make the motion to move that we allow superintendent to sign the new SRO MOU filling in the Filling in the appropriate places, the names of the district and everybody else for the $80,000.
I'll second.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Jess?
Yes.
June? Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up are the North Middle Sexual School District Handbooks Superintendent.
Yes. So thank you. Moving on with this, I did just want to explain, I do want to apologize for the delay in getting the handbooks to you. I did have a lengthy conversation with attorney Nodall today. Those handbooks were supposed to be in your hands the second Friday in July and somehow they they fell through the cracks with the attorneys because the attorneys do have to review. They essentially review our handbooks annually. And we did not get our last handbook until last Monday. So we got it out as quickly as possible after we had the chance to review them again as well. This year, the three elementary handbooks were did have some minor legal adjustments. So we have the elementary handbook, the middle school handbook and the high school handbook. And again, the majority of changes were legal based. I do want to point out just to avoid any confusion, we do have an addendum to the handbook that is on the school website. The addendum to the handbook is essentially anything that's going to be the same in all three handbooks. So an example would be the school districts bullying prevention and intervention plan, which is which is exactly the same. It's something that we have to send into DESE for approval. That is the same for all three handbooks. So rather than put it in all three, we put the we have a separate link under the handbooks on the website. And that's something that I shared with the parents last year. I'll share it again this year, telling parents and caregivers, staffers, staff members, students that if there's a concern of bullying, this is where the plan is. This is where you can access the reporting form. And there's this basically steps to follow so that it gets filed with the appropriate person. But the bullying prevention intervention plan, the Title IX information, pertinent school committee policies, those are all part of what's called the Handbook Addendum. And it was titled, the title was confusing. So I did have it changed this evening. So it actually says at the beginning Handbook Addendum. Student Handbook Addendum. Does that if that makes sense? And again, when I share with the parents, I'll tell the parents exactly this is the website. You go to the left side column, click on this. And then this is where you find it. So it will be detailed to the parents, but I do have representatives from all three levels. The Squanah Cook Handbook, the only changes that the Squanah Cook Handbook had were name changes for new staff members and things like that. There was no nothing substantial was changed in the handbook with regard to language. So if there are any questions, I see that Anne Gap is on for elementary. The high school team is here and I see Jason Webster on for for the middle school handbook and Lauren Young as well. So any questions, feel free to ask.
The only comment that I had is there's two different vice chairs in the three handbooks and none of them are correct. So if we could get that updated, that would be appreciated.
The vice chair is inaccurate. Sure.
Yes.
We can do that.
Thank you.
June. Still some still some formatting that needs to be addressed as well.
Thank you. Randy? Randy, you're on mute if you're saying something.
Sorry. As far as the student handbooks and the bullying prevention, I'm looking right on the website now and it is not listed under student handbooks. It's listed under family resources. There are student handbooks, parent guardian, contact protocol, bullying prevention. This is the high school. So it's slightly different for the different levels discrimination. So there's nothing here that says that it's part of the handbook. Which is fine. It doesn't have to be part of the handbook, but I think the handbook should at least acknowledge that that exists. Because if someone's coming to the handbook for something and they're looking up something on bullying and they don't know there's another you know, document somewhere. And it could be just as simple as, you know, see, you know, you know, bullying prevention document on the website in all three handbooks.
Sure, we can do that.
A couple of other small things that are going along the lines of some of the names is the elementary school and the middle school have the HR director as a secondary Title IX coordinator. The high school does not. As well as the high school only has the titles of the positions for these coordinators, not the names of the people in those positions.
Title for the two Title Nines, correct? Staff and student?
Yeah, it has, I believe it's Brad Brooks and the secondary is the and Tujeroni, the HR director.
Okay. You fixed up?
We guess what the elementary school and middle school say.
Okay.
So one other small concern I have with the middle school handbook is there's a lot of places where you call out district policies, which I think is great that you're relating the school policy to district policies, but it's not specifically stated that it's a district policy. Some of the titles are not the exact titles as the district policies. And there's no reference on where those called out policies are found. And being that they don't say it's a district policy, they won't know to go to the district policies. And there's no letters associated with it. It just calls out the harassment policy. So just for clarification for somebody looking at that. That should be fixed.
These are, these are not printed, correct? These are just. Okay. So if I mean, it'd be nice if we could even link them directly to that policy because Randy, the URLs don't change, correct? They're always.
Not all these are URLs. Those were just in words, at least it didn't appear in the URL.
No, I'm saying is, but we could link like where it says.
If you want to link it, that's fine.
Like not put the actual URL, but put a hyperlink because these are electronic documents.
It should be still should be clear in case they're they're not don't have access to the hyperlinks.
Completely agree. Yep. I'll be just more in addition, not to, I agree with everything else you said. I think this is just another avenue to get them to the.
And the other only other thing I saw that was different than from the three books is the high school had a statement reserving the right for the district to mask again, should the should it be called for? And I did not see that unless I missed it in the elementary and the middle school books or handbooks.
I think it was removed from the other two. So we'll we'll straighten that out as well.
Okay. And as far as specifics on the high school handbook, just curious, I see that there's new language for tardies and excessive dismissals and also on the dress code. I was just curious why no chains or ropes attached to a wallet or a personal personal piece of something, whatever, like a wallet.
So Laurie Smith, let me tackle the dress code. I'll tackle the other one.
So Randy, the reason why that we have a dress code change in that aspect is that's in conjunction with our SRO. Chains that are attached to wallets, which that's to keep them safe is also can be used as a weapon. And the other thing is chains that are used as necklaces that are actual physical chains that you either attach to your wallet or you could, you know, attach other things to can be posed a safety hazard. So that and also just on that, the change is the choker collars, the spikes on the the collars. Those also can be used as a weapon. So we feel that, you know, just for safety purposes, even though students who wear them don't necessarily always, that's not why they're wearing them. It is can be used as that. And and I did look at other school districts and they do have this as a as something in their handbook also. So that is why we are adding it in there. So it's very clear for students and parents that those things are can be used as a weapon and we will not be allowing them.
And then with regard to tardies and dismissals and whatnot, we gave it, I mean, Ms. Smith gathered a lot of data this year for us. And what we found were originally we had, I believe, with the five tardy market detention with the possibility of and 15 might get you suspension and so on. We were finding that we had big gaps. We either had kids who were like 15 to 18 and above or kids that were below 10. And the majority of those that were struggling to get to school on time were in that higher category. And with interventions, we actually saw some progress, but we felt as though to be a little more lenient with regard to the the learned experience of, you know, being held accountable for tidiness because there's a difference between 7:18 AM versus 9:45 AM. So we kind of looked at all those variables and decided to kind of open up a little bit and see if we can gather more data this year to see if there's a difference in how we hold them accountable. But that was really the only piece behind that. Nothing big.
Thank you, both.
All right. Any other questions on the handbooks? Superintendent, is the addendum new this year or has that been out before?
That's been out.
Okay. It would be helpful to have a table of contents in that because it is pretty long. And there's really no indication of what's in here.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any hands or anything. All right. If not, I will take a motion that the school committee approve the 22, 2022 dash 23 elementary student, middle school student and high school student handbooks, I'll say as as amended through our discussion.
So moved. Second.
All right, Lisa, Randy. All right. Seeing no other questions. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So those are approved. Thank you, everybody. Next up, class size. So there's requests to have a discussion or I guess a discussion around class sizes and I as superintendent and his team, just to share where we're at with we're right with current class sizes. And I know there's been a couple opportunities to make some adjustments in recent weeks. So Superintendent, I'll let you take that away if you don't mind.
Sure. So at the elementary level, and I do just want, we just want to be clear, generally speaking, when we go into the budget season, we always have a discretionary amount of money set aside in the budget. Should something happen to trigger the need for a new staff member? Whether it's a teacher or we have a student move in and they have an IEP with a one to one aid, things like that, things that just weren't in the budget, but it's generally reserved for staff that we didn't need at the time. But we need it now. All of that money or all of the money, I should say, and not just a portion of it was reduced. It was eliminated because we cut. We generally set aside $250,000 in that range and we reduced the budget by $300,000 to get the budget passed. So we did not have any extra money at all for any staffing needs. And we saw significant growth in Pepperell. And we saw some growth in Ashby as well, where we had one grade level creep up to 31. Is that correct, Dan, or 32? And then we had grade two in Pepperell that was at 27 across the board in all five sections. And we also were looking at at that point in time, still two weeks left of registrations that were happening fast and furious. And looking at the five sections of 27 and the fact that we are working on a school committee policy right now that says essentially at 25, we want to look to mitigate class size, which in the past in Ashby would have been hiring a paraprofessional. And quite honestly, in Pepperell, it financially doesn't make sense to hire a paraprofessional. We'd be hiring five paraprofessionals, all of which are benefit eligible as opposed to one teacher, which would be benefit eligible because there are five sections there. So the decision was made to post for an additional teacher in Ashby and an additional teacher at Barnum Brook. And we are going to be able to utilize some of the remaining COVID funds that we had. And just keeping in mind that we don't normally fund fund positions with one time money. But the reality is, is that we did not have the money in the budget this year. And we specifically had an Ashby teacher in our budget prior to the budget being reduced by the 300,000. And once we did that, that teaching position was gone. So just making everyone aware that, you know, the decision was made again to address the five sections of 27 at Barnum, the one section of 32 at Ashby. And we also had to hire previously, the district had all of its L's students essentially in in one building across across each level. And Desi told us this year that we had to offer L's in any building that needed it. So we had to hire a 1.0 L's teacher as well, but the department is funding this year because they told us pretty late in the game. So next year, we're likely going to be looking at an additional 3.0 in staff to start. Just because of the way some numbers have fluctuated. Across the board, our numbers are, our numbers are fairly high. You know, I've always been someone just based on student needs, especially post COVID now. At the elementary level, especially to be at the 21, 22 range. And we are not there. In some classes, some grade levels we are, but in other grade levels we're up, we're up above that. We're at 25 and 26, which is a lot. And some of our high school classes are up in the 30 range. So overall, I think we're doing okay. But I would not be totally truthful in saying that we could not use a couple additional teachers to help with this right now, above and beyond what we've already done.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions from folks? Comments?
I do want to point out too that just because we're posting for positions does not mean that we're going to have people for those positions. I'm sure everyone's well aware of what they're saying is it's almost become a personnel crisis across the country, not just the Massachusetts, but finding licensed teachers, especially now is very, very difficult.
All right. Not seeing any questions. The the list of class sizes, the stuff is in the is in the packet for those that have not seen it. All right. Thank you, Superintendent. Appreciate the overview of that.
Thank you.
Next up is the School Committee Workshop. Back to.
Yes. So just wanted to put this out there. A couple of colleagues of mine, one of whom is a superintendent in Tinsborough, another is a superintendent in in Chums, both of whom I work pretty closely with, have have been speaking very highly of a workshop that is offered by Paul Ash. Paul Ash was the longtime superintendent in Lexington. He's a former union president. He's also a former school committee member. And he currently works for, he's retired now. He works for Rebus Associates in Massachusetts. And he does basically a workshop on how central office in school committee can work effectively together as a team. His workshop, he has, I've spoken directly to Superintendent Flanagan in Tinsborough, and this will be, I believe, the third time that Dr. Ash has come out. He does it every couple of years due to school committee turnover. I believe the third time that Dr. Ash has come out. He does it every couple of years due to school committee turnover. Um, and he is going to be going to Chumsford next week to offer the same workshop to them. Uh, but from what I'm hearing, it's a very beneficial workshop, and it really is around how. Again, central office and school committee can work together effectively as a team to benefit the school district. Uh, it, it is, um, I'd say it is a fairly, um, pricey workshop. It's, it's nineteen hundred dollars for three hours, and it is a three-hour workshop and based upon how, um, how the workshop runs. Um, you know, he, he can get into a multitude of topics if there is time, but he really does focus first and foremost. On the aspect of how do, how do we work as a unit to benefit the school district? And thought it might be something, um, that might benefit the school committee. Again, I realize, I realize that everyone is busy. It is a relatively quick workshop. And I, I don't know what the fall is going to look like, but maybe it could potentially replace a school committee meeting so that it doesn't impact. Uh, the, the members of the school committee schedule either. Um, maybe instead of a seven o'clock meeting, we were able to do a, a five or a six. And replace a meeting prior to the budget season. But just wanted to, wanted to gauge interest. I, I have, you know, again, I, I realize everyone's busy, um, so maybe there's something we could do. To replace another meeting. I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, I certainly don't want to add meetings to anyone's plate at this point in time. But think it would be beneficial and it's, it's still a meeting for us and maybe it, it, and ultimately make us more efficient. So maybe losing a meeting isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement and, um. I know we've been talking about a workshop for a while, so, um. If this, if this fills that need, I'm. I, I think it's something we would need. Um, and then if we can, I mean, we're always able to shuffle things around agenda-wise, so I, I think. If we had to use an existing meeting date, that shouldn't pose too much of an issue before we get into the thicker budget season. But, um.
I just wanted to throw out there too. I think something that's a little different. I mean. A M A S C certainly offers workshops, but oftentimes it is coming from. Uh, a person who's been a school committee member where, where Dr. Ash has been a school committee member. He's been a superintendent. He's been a union president. So he's kind of been multiple different roles, um. So he can, he comes at it from various viewpoints, having been in, in multiple roles.
What do, uh, what others on the committee think?
I think it's.
I heard the first two words, Lisa, I heard, I think, and then. And then I think you cut out. All right. We'll come back to Lisa, uh, June.
I think it would be beneficial. We have talked about, um, you know, doing some more professional development. Like, please for ourselves and we just haven't, we haven't, you know, made the, made that a priority with everything else that's gone on the last couple of years, so. I think we should stop and, and make that a priority this time.
Thanks, June. Randy?
Um, I'm also in favor of this. Um, I know the school committee, um, sporadically has looked into how to become more efficient, how to. Have, uh, better meetings, um, how to coordinate with the, uh, central office and just function better. So I think that this professional development, uh, absolutely is called for.
Excellent. Thanks, Randy. Jess?
I also agree that this would be a good thing for us to do, I think.
Good. Superintendent?
I, I was just going to ask because, um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna guess that Dr. Ash is busy and he does live down on the Cape now. So I didn't know if we wanted to provide him, our, our two dates in October are the third and the seventeenth. Just so we could secure a date. Uh, otherwise we'll have to wait until the September meeting. To put a potential date out there, but maybe a s- the third of the seventeenth and maybe shoot for a five-thirty meeting. I know it's earlier. We would obviously have to post it as a working session. Um, but I am trying to be cognizant of his driving up and. Trying to, I, I think the later it goes, the more, um. I think I, I would certainly be more engaged if we're, um, if we're a little bit earlier in the day where it's probably gonna be. Um, a pretty robust agenda.
And it is, it is an in-person meeting, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Good clarification, Lisa. Thank you.
But if I had two dates to share with him, I don't know if those dates. Uh, it is really before the budget season really gets moving, so. And we could certainly use the meeting that he's unable to come to and really. Um, you know, pack the agenda, uh, for things that, that need to be done. So I, I, I think it's doable, but. I, from my point of view, I'd love to be able to say do October third or October seventeenth work. Uh, at this time, and then we give them a couple of options, and if it doesn't work, then maybe we need to wait until. Um, the spring to address it the following year, because we do get into budget season.
Yeah, I think. I think that makes sense, those two dates. So I, I would maybe lean towards the seventeenth just, uh. To get us into the year just a bit, but either of those dates, I think, makes sense because they're, they're close enough together. We can shuffle things to one meeting to the, or the other.
What about start time? Would five-thirty present a problem?
No, my, doesn't sound like it. I'm seeing a lot of head nods now, so.
Okay. Um. Not sure if you want to vote or not, if you just want me to reach out and see unless. There's an issue.
Um, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't think we need to vote on you trying to confirm. At this point. All right. Any other questions on the workshop? Right. Thank you for that. Now, next up is FY twenty-two budget transfer. I think, yes, Miss Haynes is on.
Yeah, um, so I'm getting ready to finalize the FY twenty-two. Um, year, our auditors are actually on site this week, and. We have the option, um, to leave funds available for, in the circuit breaker. Um, account, and that is used for special education costs. Um, typically tuitions, and given that we've had some tuition increases this year. I'm hoping to leave the most that I can in that fund so that. It will help us offset any increases in FY twenty-three. And in doing that, um, what it allows me to do is transfer funds from the circuit breaker or expenses that we paid out of the circuit breaker fund. Back to the general fund, le- thereby leaving the amount. We're allowed to, um, statutorily, we can leave up to one year's worth of. Revenue that we received in that fund and that, and, but not more than that. And that would be about a million five, um, that we would leave in the circuit breaker fund. If I move those funds or those expenses back to the general fund, I end up slightly over budget. In that section, and that's why I'm asking if the committee would consider approving the transfer. To move funds from the, uh, insurances lines, the available funds and insurance lines to that. Out-of-district line so that we can leave the most available for unforeseen things in FY twenty-three. It's not a huge transfer, but I, I think, given that we have some unexpected things happening and, and out-of-district placements, this would probably be a good idea. Um, I wasn't able to prepay as much as I was hoping to. We are also allowed to prepay tuitions. Uh, mostly due to the cost of the trans- final transportation in FY twenty-two. So some of the funds that we moved, um, I, I would have wanted to maybe prepay, but we ended up having to use those for tw- for our transport costs. But I'm just trying to finalize the numbers and, um, if the committee's okay with a, a transfer, that would, that would leave the most available in that. Circuit breaker fund.
Randy?
Um, I, I'm assuming that, you know, we're allowed to cover FY twenty-two tuition payments with the FY twenty-three budget. Which I always thought that, uh, July thirty-first.
No, this is, this is just activity, this is just activity in FY twenty-two, nothing to do with FY twenty-three. So all I would be doing would be, and I actually, the reports that are in the packet, I've already done the transfer, so you can see how it would end up. Um, I'm moving expenses that were paid initially out of the circuit breaker fund back to the general fund. So the only thing in FY twenty, that will happen in FY twenty-three is that we would have the circuit breaker funds available. In the revolving or the, the state revolving fund for circuit breaker.
I think I was confused by the, the statement of transfer, uh, to cover FY twenty-two tuition payments.
Yeah, it's an FY twenty-two transfer. It's sort of like, um, I, I'm not allowed to make that transfer without school community's approval. Be, um, so this is, this is that hundred and sixteen thousand transfer. Would allow me to put more expenses back to that section of the, you know, the out-of-district placement in FY twenty-two. So the transfer is all FY twenty-two. The only thing is FY twenty-three is we are, uh, allowed to prepay. Um, some tuition for FY twenty-three out of twenty-two if the funds are available. We were talking about doing that a few, I think it was maybe two or three meetings ago, we did that. Um, but again, I, I was able, only able to do a little bit of that because the final costs were higher than I was expecting. So that, that's just a sort of an aside. Um, that means that in FY twenty-three, our tuition is now at a higher level. We're gonna need those funds. We, we budgeted, you know, only so much for tuitions. Those numbers look like they're, we're gonna be off slightly. I mean, we're still waiting for some of the final placements for FY twenty-three, so. Having, uh, the full amount of the resources that we're allowed to have in circuit breaker will, would help. For next year if we do have X, you know, higher tuition costs.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Kind of confusing. I agree.
Nancy, with this motion, how it's written? Um, am I reading FY twenty-two dash three or FY twenty-two, twenty-three?
Let me just look at that. So FY twenty-two, um, it's the third budget transfer from, for FY twenty-two. Sorry, that's confusing. You're right.
I think that's the mistake I made.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure when I read it, I read it appropriately.
Right, not year, F, it's, and it's the third budget transfer in FY twenty-two for, for FY twenty-two year.
Okay. Are you guys ready for the motion?
I believe so.
Okay. That the school committee approved FY twenty-two third. Budget transfer to cover FY twenty-two tuition pay, payments, leaving more funds available in the circuit breaker fund. One hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars to be added to payments to out-of-district schools. One thousand, or one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars to be transferred from. Insurance, retirement, and other.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or further comments? Seeing none. Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Uh.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous. Thank you, Nancy. Thanks, everybody. Um, next we have subcommittee reports. Um, is there any update from Accelerator Repair, the High School Building Committee? Finance? Negotiation and personnel? Our newly formed communication subcommittee? Come on, Tom, we have a meeting coming up, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can sure we have a meeting coming up, um, our, our, our first, so. Um, yeah, no, looking forward to it. That's all.
Awesome. Thank you, Tom. Uh, and policy, Randy?
Yes, um, so a lot of work has been put into the regional agreement, uh, proposed changes. We had the community meeting, got a lot of good. Um, feedback from that. Um, and so when representing to you is, um. A proposed, uh, change that we need to submit for preliminary, um, approval from the state before we can give it to the towns. Uh, so the basis of the process that we go through is we submit the changes we'd like to make. The state gives their state, you know, you know, preliminary stamp of approval because changes can still be made, um, at any point before the towns vote. Um, they may make some suggestions, uh, what we can and cannot do or other suggestions, uh, to put in here. Uh, we present them at a town meeting, and again, at the town meetings, um, they certainly can. Decide to vote on, um, an amended regional agreement that would have to get passed in all three towns, but we need all three towns to agree to, um. A new regional agreement or amended one, um, and then it goes back to the state. Uh, for the commissioner's final approval before we actually can put it into place. So this is that first step. Um, I tried putting in here what has changed. The main document that's in front of you, this is a working draft. That was crafted, uh, a number of years ago, um. Uh, from our. Fairly illegible of current regional agreement with all the amendments. So this, this document took everything that was in there except for. The crazy amendments with towns joining and leaving and, and everything else, and this was the basics of what was in there. Uh, we've changed some things, some legal, we've added a few things. Um, going down there, we added a section, uh, for the election of school committee member's schedule. So it just kind of puts down the schedule of residents from the different towns and the at-large members and when they're being. Um, elected, uh, coming down further, uh, the type of regional school district, this language was changed. Um, I still need to get some language from, uh, the attorney before this goes in just, uh, for language around the preschool program. Because we don't offer free preschool throughout the district. Um, the attorney suggested that we keep it a K to twelve district. And the preschool be described as one of the special education programs that allows for tuition in students. We just haven't come up with that language yet. I'm just waiting on the attorney for that. We put in, uh, or section three, the regional district school buildings, um, we changed the location of the school buildings. Um, updated some language, updated the schools, um, with some pretty old schools in there. And then we added, uh, two sections. Uh, one is district-owned property since the time that this was written. Um, we, there's the high school that was being built, but there was no, no other property that was being built, um, being owned by the district. And then, uh, a completely new one is the sale of district-owned property. I thought having something in here. Um. Would be appropriate. No other school district has anything about the sale of district-owned property. There's no law, MGL laws governing. The sale of, uh, district, school district-owned property, so we'll see what, uh, the state comes back with on this section. Um, apportionment of payment and costs, this was updated for the five-year rolling average, uh, for both the capital costs and. Operating costs as well as putting in contingencies for the capital costs. Uh, for if a building doesn't have any students in it, if we're leasing out part of it, central office is part of it. Uh, so just trying to, um, make sure that we can appropriate and have an appropriation for any capital costs in the different situations. Uh, transportation, we just updated language and put in the MGL. Um, again, excess and deficiency fund, we updated it for the, uh, MGL, and then we added in stabilization fund. Um. The, we reduced the petition requirements, uh, for an amendment from ten percent to five percent on recommendation from the community. Um, group that we had get together. Um, admission of additional towns, again, we updated language, uh, same thing with the withdrawal of a, uh, district, we updated language for current laws. And, um. Again, deposit of money paid, we're throwing in the, uh, MGL, uh, listed in there. Um, to update that, make sure there's no issues, and we put in a review of this agreement for every five years so that we don't. Run into this problem of, you know, thirty, forty years going by without it being amended. Um, and then the tuition of students, uh, updated that again, putting in mass general law. Um, because we do tuition in, in-state students for some of our special education programs. As well as we have the ability to just, um, tuition in out-of-state. Um, because we do tuition in, in-state students for some of our special education programs, as well as we have the ability to just, um, tuition in out-of-state um, students as well. So, any questions on the changes that were made? Okay, then I will move, uh, I'll close my, uh, the motion there. I may not have it exactly how it's written in there, but I, I will move that the school committee approve the regional, uh, agreement proposed changes to submit to the state for preliminary, uh, approval.
All right. Any last questions or comments?
I do have to thank Randy for all the work that she's done on this. It's been, uh, quite the undertaking, and she's led the team and done very well. So thank you, Randy. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa. You, you did a fair bit the first time around that we tried doing this.
Not as much as you did. There was a lot.
I, I echo that, and, uh, knowing that you're working off of, uh, seemed like stone tablets with the original version of the agreement, so you had your work cut out for you, getting this thing updated, so thank you. Um, all right. No other comments, so Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I think, Randy, you'll have to, you should, you should print off when this is finally approved, print off one in the old mimeograph purple, uh, font, um, with that smell, just, just for bustery.
I'll go find an old mimeograph machine.
There you go.
There may be one around.
It's surprising. At least in the museum, they might let me use it.
There you go.
If I still remember how.
All right, um, any other items? I didn't, uh, see any other business, so June?
Yes, I'm sorry. I missed my opportunity to ask this earlier. Is the Collins Center report available to the public yet? And if not, can we get it on the website, like ASAP? I know people have been asking for that.
Brad, you're muted.
Thank you. I don't see any reason why we can't put it on the website.
Yeah.
Robin, can you see if that can be uploaded tomorrow? I know it's a huge document. I don't know if we're gonna have issues with uploading it.
I'll work with Jeremy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other thing, um, June, I guess for the, for the building, the new building committee to, to consider is, um, do we need a, do we need a dedicated area on our website, a separate website, because there will likely be a lot of information? Um, so we'll need to work with the superintendent and his team to make sure that we account for that, because that's obviously out of time and effort, or, um, I know for the High School Building Committee, we had, uh, a separate site that, uh, we thankfully didn't have to burden the administrative team with, uh, with some of the updates, because they were, they became frequent kind of in the middle part of the project, so just, uh, just an FYI.
Yeah, good point.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Okay.
Right, this is June. Um, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are adjourned. Appreciate everybody's time. Have a good night. We'll talk to you in a few weeks.
Right.
Thanks, everybody.